Monday, June 3rd, 2024, to order. It is currently 8:03 PM. I would ask everyone who can rise, please rise and do the state of the pledge of allegiance with. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to confirm that we have a quorum for the record?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening. In the council chambers, we have Councilmember Steph, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Pro Tem Wolfley, Mayor Adams, Councilmember Brady, Councilmember Truesdale, and Councilmember Ende Bumado.
Hey, thank you so very much. At this time, I'll entertain motions for agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Councilwoman Ende Bumado?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Good evening, City of Bowie residents, and good evening, city staff and colleagues. I'd like to make a motion to remove the last item, move the last item under new business to next council hearing.
Second. Second. It's been moved improperly second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying favor? Hearing none, motion carried. We will now go to citizen participation. Thank you, city clerk. Alfonso Simmons? Please come forth. I just adjust the mic to whatever you're comfortable with.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. Today, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Alfonso Simmons, better known as Coach A. I'm here on behalf of the baseball community in Bowie. I'm currently the commissioner of Bowie Baseball, a part of Bowie Boys and Girls Club. I'm also a proud dad of two sons, and my journey of coaching for Bowie began when my younger son was eight. He is currently 16. During that time, our baseball program had about 350 players, and we had a few good seasons. But who could have guessed COVID was around the corner, and our program struggled, like many other nonprofits, and some programs never recovered. Enrollment in baseball decreased around the county. Our program shut down in 2020, and when we reopened in 2021, our enrollment was down to only 240 players. It had extremely, it was extremely hard to grow our program and impact baseball in PG County. Today, Bowie Baseball has more than 540 players, which is the highest it has ever been, and 100 volunteer coaches, and we are very proud of where we are and where we are going. Our players are developing, our coaches are dedicated, and our parent volunteers are always there when you need them. We are also affiliated with the Major League Baseball RBI Program, which stands for Revitalizing Baseball in Inter-Cities, which prioritizes increasing African-American and Hispanic players to continue to play baseball and around the world. This currently connects to our community and our partnerships with our local city minor league program, Bowie Bay Sox, local businesses, and sponsors. Our program is about more than just numbers. It's about community, family, and coming together. It's about teamwork and friendships. It's also about embodying the principles of D-A-W-G, dog, discipline, attitude, work ethic, and grit. These principles not only help our players on the field, but also in life. However, to continue fostering the growth and instilling these values, we need support for our baseball fields. While our fields are not in good condition, we struggle to practice and play our games consistently. This affects the quality of the teams and diminishes our overall experience for everyone involved, from the youngest T-baller to the seasoned travel player. While overall, we are thriving in PG County, our goal is to become competitive throughout the entire state of Maryland and then nationwide. To achieve this, we need to ensure that our facilities are on par or better than those in other regions. Our current field conditions are holding us back. Safety risks to our kids, and we risk also losing valuable volunteers and players, other programs that offer better amenities. I stand before you today to ask for your support in prioritizing maintenance of our baseball fields. Here are a few specific actions that we believe can make a significant impact. Prioritizing field maintenance. Allocating more resources towards the regular upkeep of our baseball fields. This includes repairing and upgrading the playing surfaces, specifically adding dirt at increasing intervals, ensuring proper drainage, and maintaining surrounding facilities. Two, surveying and providing additional support to our maintenance crews. This could involve hiring more staff or partnering with local landscaping businesses and contractors that the city approves that can offer their expertise and resources. Three, allow volunteer involvement. Create opportunities for our dedicated volunteers to assist with maintenance. Many, many, many community members are willing to contribute their time and skills to help our fields and keep them in top condition, but we need additional approval and support for that. Four, allow us to purchase sheds, storage containers at Jericho Park and Alaparn. We can keep pitching mounds, pitching machines, and other expensive gear that is at risk of being stolen and is normal in very highly competitive programs. Last, necessary amenities. We need a 70-foot diamond on Jericho Park. We need bullpens on each premium field in Bowie, and we need a batting cage at Jericho Park. Bowie Baseball has already purchased one, we just need permission to set it up. With these steps, we can not only improve the quality of baseball fields, but also strengthen the sense of community and pride and involvement. Together, we can make Bowie the powerhouse in Maryland's baseball scene, attracting more players, families, and spectators to our city. I urge you to consider the impact that well-maintained baseball fields can have on our community. It's not just about sports, it's about fostering teamwork, discipline, and healthy lifestyle for our youth. Let's work together and ensure our baseball program continues to grow and thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we hope to make Bowie stronger through our baseball program.
Hey, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And staff, you've taken note of some of that? Thank you.
Yes, we're happy to work with him and talk about and work to maintain our, continue to maintain our baseball field, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to presentations. We have the Arts and Education College Scholarship Awards.
Not sure exactly where to stand, but I think this is a good spot because I can see all of you. Good evening to everyone, it is a pleasure to be here. My name is Nicole Warner, and this is Julie Gordon, and we represent the City of Bowie Education Committee. This is a really exciting time for us because we get to celebrate educators. Anytime that we get to pause to celebrate our educators and their leaders, that brings us immense joy because there's so much other stuff, right? And so tonight, I first want to thank the principals, the assistant principals who are here representing all of the schools because they did the heavy lift. They nominated all of these wonderful educators that we will see today. So if you could just stand up, principals, assistant principals, we have representation from every school being recognized. And so thank you to those leaders, those principals, assistant principals, who are, some of them are in two places. They have lots of activities happening, but they made it a point to be here with us tonight. And I just want to recognize, before we begin to call our educators up, this is about leadership, right? Teachers and educators who are leaders within the building. And there is, I'm reminded of a great quote that talks about, "Leadership is about communicating to the people their potential and their worth so clearly that they begin to see it in themselves." And so that is what we're doing tonight. The principals saw their leadership, and for all of our teachers and educators from the Education Committee, we want to tell you that we see you. From the City of Bowie Council, we see you, and we appreciate you, and we value the work that you're doing. So, you're tired of me talking, I know. So we're going to invite you to come up. We're going to celebrate you, so when you come up, we'll give you your certificate and your recognition, and we have a special treat in there with it. They didn't trust me to hold it, so we have to have Julie hold it because it was very enticing, but I know how much it means to you. So you'll come up, you'll receive that, we'll celebrate you, and we'll ask you all to remain standing here so that we can get a great picture with our council and that we can recognize everyone together. Plus, you all came with an entourage. So I know it will be picture time on high fly, and we want to make sure we recognize all of that. Sounds good? All right, you guys are a good class tonight. All right, first person we want to recognize is from Pointer Ridge Elementary School, Carla Burgess. And you can come on around, oh, actually, you can stand there. All right, and if you want to just stand right around there. Next person from C. Elizabeth Reeg Regional School, Sonia Cortez Sayasa. From Yorktown Elementary School, Jessica Elston. From Benjamin Tasker Middle School, Amanda Uzar. Pretend as if it's a red carpet, we see it. We see the red carpet because you're making it a red carpet. Also from Benjamin Tasker Middle School, Marty Jenkins. Another leader from Pointer Ridge Elementary School, Valerie Jones. From Whitehall Elementary School, Isabel Martin. From Yorktown Elementary School, Shirin Namias. Congratulations. From Whitehall Elementary School, Michelle Panty. From Samuel Ogle Middle School, Nicole Pierceall. I knew it was coming, I knew it was coming. Congratulations. From Tulip Grove Elementary School, Madeline Perez. Her colleague from Tulip Grove Elementary School, Esma Pirschala. Congratulations. From Samuel Ogle Middle School, Keith Pieschek. Bring some men into the room. From C. Elizabeth Reeg Regional School, Michelle Shavers Burnside. Thank you. From Grace Christian School, Susan Tzloski. I did my best, Susan. Congratulations. Also from Grace Christian School, Cindy Weaver. Going to invite the city council to, you want to come up now, or you want to? Okay, come on up now. You guys want to come around?
Bring the line around. Who's the line leader?
Come on around. While they're coming around, another round of applause. Look at your teacher leaders in the city of Bowie. If your children do not have these educators, snap their picture so that you can try to get them, you know, as your teacher.
Let's go this way, we have the flag in the back.
Okay now, okay. We see what's happening here.
All right, is everybody in the picture?
Don't be shy with the cameras.
Education on three, one, two, three. All right.
This is what we learn after. Are we good again?
We're good?
I think we're good.
Okay, we will now have the Arts and Education College Scholarship Awards.
Good evening, everyone. Well, the vivacious Nicole is a hard act to follow, but I'm Shalina Hayes, and I am vice chair of the Arts Committee, and this is Kathleen, and she is the chair, long-term chair, of the Arts Committee. And we are excited to celebrate the arts in the city of Bowie. So this scholarship goes to two deserving students who will be pursuing performing and visual arts in the collegiate manner, and we are very excited to have them here. So I'm going to steal some quotes from our recipients today. First, from Kaia Jordan. She said, "Some speak through words, I speak through art." So I think that is a great representation of what we are awarding here tonight. And then another quote from Willow Singleton is that, "This of all, to thine own self be true." And so that's what we love about artists, is that they stay true to themselves, and we want to award that. So first, can we have Ms. Kaia Jordan come up? She's from the Sandy Springs Friends School, and she plans on attending George Washington University and pursuing a career in fine arts, correct? Yes. And next, we have Willow Singleton. She is currently attending Duke Ellington School of the Arts, and she is going to New York University Tisch School of Drama to pursue a degree in drama, of course, I mean, what else, are you going there? Come on up.
Thank you. I've always been an artist since I was young, and so this really means a lot to me. So thank you all, and then thank you to YouTube for giving me this, I really appreciate it. Hi, everyone. So in the future, I would like to be in acting and theater, but my main focus is on arts and activism because I feel like through theater, through the arts of it, people can be really liberated and understand other perspectives. So that's what I want to use art for, and thank you so much, and thank you so much.
We'll ask them to stay up here while we recognize two other scholars tonight from the Education Committee. First, today we recognize our leaders, these are our leaders too. They're inspiring us with what the future looks like. And so we're excited to celebrate two scholars on behalf of the Education Committee. The first one that we'd like to recognize, from Bowie High School. He is, I believe, going to the University of Maryland Baltimore. Baltimore campus, UMBC, and if I remember correctly from his application, strong GPA, strong recommendations, really great essay. But I also remember, in addition to all of those, he was also a firefighter. Is that right? Planned to be, but he has done a lot of volunteer work. He wants to study civil engineering, okay? Recognize Nathaniel Scott from Bowie High School. And as he's up here, I'm going to read his inspirational quote. "Doing nothing often leads to the very best of something." Winnie the Pooh? So congratulations to Nathaniel, we are so proud of you and excited that you are representing the city of Bowie. Congratulations. Our next recipient is, she's an entrepreneur. She is an innovator. She talks about STEM work, coding, STEM work, and focusing on Black girls, Hispanic girls, talking about diversity in STEM. She is from Bowie High School, and she is going to be headed to the University of Maryland. Her name is Sophia Villar. Now I'm going to read her inspirational quote, and it says, "Curiosity fuels my journey. Each question uncovers new wonders guiding me forward." Who wrote that? Sophia. So congratulations to both of them. We had a ton of individuals who applied, but these individuals stood out as not only caring about their community, but also leaders in their own right. So we know that they will continue to do well, and again, we are proud that she's representing the city of Bowie. Round of applause for our scholarship recipients. I'm going to invite them to come up to share a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for all being here for us, and I want to thank my mom and my uncle Ronnie for being here tonight. I take my Maryland State EMT Practical Exam this Saturday to become cleared as an EMT for the Bowie Volunteer Fire Department, Station 39, right next to Bowie High. And I'm really excited to volunteer to see all of you guys, right? Or hopefully not see all you. All right, thank you, good night.
Hello, everyone. I just want to keep it nice and short. Thank you so much to the city of Bowie for recognizing my talents and seeing the potential in me, and I hope to use this scholarship and pay it forward to my community at the University of Maryland. Thank you.
This concludes our portion for the Education and Arts Committee. We do have some snacks for the recipients in the foyer, and you're welcome to stay if you're not staying for the entire meeting. Thank you.
We'll get back started with business. Excuse me. Thank you, and again, congratulations. All right. At this time, I don't believe we had any city boards and committees that we need to address this evening, correct?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we will now go to council announcements. And I would like to just first start off by saying to all of the city's staff and everybody engaged, I thought Bowie Fest was a tremendous success. And I'd like to again thank the staff and all of the people involved. And I'd like to again, thank the staff and all of the people involved in that because city manager, everyone did a great job at Bowie Fest. And I think we can all say what a great job that was. I would like to also remind everyone of Juneteenth celebration coming up. So know that that's, put that on your calendar and look for that coming up on June 15th, I believe it is. And so look forward to that. And without taking more of that time, I'll allow any other comments or any other announcements from any of them. I will start with Dennis Brady, then I will go to Councilwoman Enda Bumadu.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo your praise to the staff, it was a great success, one of many. But I would also suggest that I discovered Saturday that that was the 47th year that we've had Bowie Fest. So I was just started to put a place marker down that maybe we ought to look to do something very special for the 50th. And so just put that on a marker down as we move forward in the next couple of budgets to look to see how can we make it exciting as a 50th anniversary.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Enda Bumadu.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city of Bowie residents and colleagues. Just a couple of quick announcements. I want to first give a big thank you to our Chief Preston for the community meeting that he hosted with the South Lake Community last week. He gave a very informative presentation on updates in the area and everything that our police force is doing to combat safety, to protect the community and enhance safety measures in the South Lake community pertaining to District 4. So I just wanted to shout out Chief Preston and his team and the Bowie Police Force. The second update that I wanted to share was that I attended ICSC Conference in Las Vegas and I will be presenting on the outcomes of that in the coming weeks to this body and the rest of our city residents. So appreciate you city staff for supporting me, especially our city clerk, supporting me and getting there. So thank you so much for that. And then the last announcement that basically came out of ICSC is meeting with Secretary of Commerce Kevin Anderson. I'll be meeting with Secretary Anderson in the coming weeks and his team to figure out how to work on and collaborate how we can support more entrepreneurs specifically that are starting businesses in the city of Bowie and how that can contribute to the broader state of Maryland ecosystem. So I'm really appreciative of Secretary Anderson for all of his conversation out at ICSC as well as his chief of staff and supporting us to get a robust program for our entrepreneurs that are here in the city of Bowie. So thank you so much and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we will now move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I have no report tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, city manager. At this time, we will move on to the consent agenda and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, the motion carries. We will now move on to old business. The adoption of ordinance 0-5-24 authorizing the acquisition of certain real property owned by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning. And I will turn that over to staff. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Joe Minor, the city planning director. Just to provide the background for you for this public hearing, this is for adoption of ordinance 0524, which authorizes a land exchange between the city and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. It involves acquisition of certain real property owned by Park and Planning known as the Oak Community Park property, that's the former name for that property, on Mount Oak Road, which consists of 56.33 acres for a public purpose. And also then declaring the real property owned by the city on Mill Branch Road, known as the Core Bowie Property, consisting of 61.41 acres as surplus property and authorizing its conveyance to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. The city has an acquisition policy and in our memo that we provided to you, we are identifying that this land exchange does comply with your policy, R 6198, in that the acquisition of the Mount Oak Properties will meet the city's requirements because acquisition would preserve public open space, expand recreational opportunities, facilitate future municipal uses and operations, and assist with environmental protection and is in the best interest of the city. The disposition of the Core Bowie Property on Mill Branch Road would meet the requirements of that resolution because the original purpose for which the property was acquired, which was potential sewage treatment plant sludge disposals disposal, is no longer pertinent. And because the land is located over one mile from the city limits, it's more appropriate for another public agency to hold title to the property rather than the city. So as I stated, ordinance 0524 was introduced at your last meeting. It's up for public hearing and action tonight and that concludes the staff presentation.
Do you have any questions from the council? Hearing none. I will declare the public hearing open. Do you have any, anyone signed up?
No, Mayor, there's nobody signed up and no comments were received via email.
Thank you. At this time, I would declare the public hearing closed and we'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 0-5-24.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to the request for program funding from the Maryland Women's Business Center and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Truesdale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city staff, colleagues. I, on, on March 4th, we had a presentation from the Maryland Women's Business Center and I wanted to address that. I wanted to bring Ms. Donnetta, if she can come up. And I request that, that on the agenda, that we would look into the Shop Local incubator at the Bowie Town Center. And so you gave a great presentation several months ago. It was, it was very informative. If you can kind of give us a brief summary.
Yes, good evening and thank you, Councilmember Truesdale. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be in front of you once again tonight. The MWBC Shop Local program launched in 2019 and has been highly successful, expanding from one location in Rockville to a total of three locations with two new storefronts opening in July in Howard County. Through the program, MWBC has supported nearly 40 women entrepreneurs with 77% of our participants coming from historically underserved communities. Additionally, 87% of our program graduates have successfully opened either a brick and mortar or online store. MWBC is confident that expanding Shop Local into Bowie will successfully nurture businesses and provide the locally grown retail options the community seeks. Additionally, MWBC Shop Local can help fill vacant retail spaces across all shopping locations in the city, not just Bowie Town Center, by bringing fresh and diverse retail options that attract foot traffic and stimulate local economic activity.
Thank you much. I wanted, wanted to open the floor. I mean, if any of my colleagues have any questions, they want to ask in regards to Shop Local.
I guess I would ask you, one from memory and bear with me if I don't get it quite right and please correct me. You were looking for $134,000?
$101,250.
$101,000. Now, if we, if we did the incubator and Councilwoman, you may chime in on it, would that be $100,000 we would need to do every year? Or would that be the initial cost of getting it up and running and then the, the cost being reduced?
So of that $101,000, 13,000 of it is, 13,500 is operating costs, but the remaining balance would be for annual expenses. That's operating cost. We will have to pay rent. Part of that rent will be subsidized and then part of it will be through member application fees, participant fees, excuse me. But it's also to support small business support within the city of Bowie. And what does that entail? That allows us to bring a small business counselor to help oversee the program, but provide training and counseling, not just to the participants, but the surrounding business Bowie ecosystem. We provide training on initiatives from everything on how to do a business in the city of Bowie. As you saw, we had our first kickoff one in January, had close to 30 attendees. We're going to do another training here in City Hall two weeks from now and invite you all to attend for the Verizon Small Business Digital Ready Program. And actual city of Bowie business won this grant last year, which was $10,000. So it's for small business support for consultant, but also for the retail incubator. We couldn't do one without the other.
Okay. If I may, if you don't mind, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Enda Bumadu, would that be something that would benefit the businesses in District 4 as well or a separate program you would be looking at? I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that, by the way.
Can you come back to me on that question? Let me just think about it.
If, if I may.
Go ahead.
If I may. As an entrepreneur, I started a business in the city of Bowie 23 years ago. I know it was the same year, actually, the Bowie Town Center was, was open. And with thriving stores, the small businesses of our city is, is so important because once invested into, these small businesses are investing in education as well as family and giving back to the community. Just like we had one store at the Town Center who haven't even opened their doors yet, contribute to our residents that were displaced in our community by fire. But for, but for the most part, as a small business, as an entrepreneur, the Bowie, Bowie Town Center stores that's thriving there, I have a business in District 4, I have a business in District 3. And I know the importance of investing in future entrepreneurs, startup businesses. These are the businesses that operate daily. And, you know, if, if, if we can support these small businesses, we can support our community.
Okay.
And just to piggyback on that, we are, Retail Incubator is much different than any other retail incubator that you're going to see here in the state of Maryland. Not only are we providing training, there are six courses. We actually increased the courses to seven with this cohort, our most recent cohort, because Square has adopted, excuse me, sponsored the program to provide POS terminals for all of the participants at no cost for every annually, on an annual basis. But they're not just doing that, they're providing training as well to make sure that our entrepreneurs that participate in the program know how to utilize the POS to the best ability. So they understand what inventory turns are, how to market, look at other things such as email platforms with the Square system as well. So we're providing training, we're providing one-on-one counseling, but we're also asking the participants to work in the store. So that way they learn what it takes to actually manage a storefront and customer service skills that go beyond just a physical storefront to online sales as well. And so we're really excited about that opportunity that we most recently implemented within our program.
Okay, one of the questions, if you don't mind.
Just when you're ready.
Okay, okay. I, I have this. How, how would we measure the success of the program? What kind of feedback on that return on the investment from the city to you on doing that? What kind of metrics? What would we be able to get back to see the progress that may be, may have happened over the course of a year or even in periods throughout the year that we can see how it's going?
Well, definitely, we provide monthly reports in regards to sales. We also provide within those monthly metrics, how many retail instances were generated in foot traffic, how many maker events were held. And then before the program participants graduate, we allow, we actually have the Economic Development Offices come and speak to opportunities that are available, whether those opportunities are grants and are vacant spaces in the cities that we operate.
Okay. Councilwoman Enda Bumadu.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, I will say, I want to congratulate you because getting Square to sponsor something is no easy task. So that speaks to the validity of your program and how successful it seems that the program is. I want to be clear that I'm not really in support of this being geared towards the Bowie Town Center. I know that the Bowie Town Center needs a lot of support and needs a lot of work, but I don't necessarily feel like it's on the responsibility of the city council to focus on what the Bowie Town Center needs to do. I think that owner needs to pull their own weight and basically invest in their property. So I want to be clear on my objective there. And I think if this program could be expanded out to the other shopping centers that are surrounding the Bowie area, then that's something that I possibly could be looking at supporting, but geared towards the Bowie Town Center is a hard no for me. But in terms of my questions is, can you talk to us a little bit more about the specifics of the training? As somebody who is a startup owner, and I know the councilman, Ms. Councilmember Truesdale has small businesses throughout the city of Bowie and in other counties, so I want to lean on his experience, but as myself, who has a SaaS-based company that is based in the city of Bowie currently at this time, I want to understand, like, what exact type of training will you be offering? Because I think a lot of times people focus more on, we provide training and counseling. And what I have seen as a small business owner and as somebody who has supported and mentored and provided grants to a lot of small business owners, most of the time, they don't necessarily need training, they need equity or they need access and they need resources. So I'd like to understand, can you be specific about the types of training you'll be offering? Can you be specific about what types of partnerships do you have? Do you have partnerships with other banking partners that will be able to give them access to equity? Do you have partnerships with partners that are giving them grants, loans? Like what exact type of resources will you be providing in partnership with the training? And then talk a little bit more about the roles and the responsibilities of this business counselor. Because their salary is majority of the funding at $65,000, what exactly will they be doing for these business owners?
Great questions. Thank you, council member. I'll start first with the training. So there's a six-part series that we typically do and it involves everything from doing a market assessment, looking at the business itself. What we're really getting them prepped for is not only in terms of scaling their business, but also finalizing their business plan so that they can go out and get loans and/or grant and funding opportunities. So those training opportunities includes a market research, market analysis, it includes operations, financial projections, digital transformation, and within that digital transformation, we've included the POS system. But we also talk about social media marketing and how to utilize Google Analytics and Google Ads. We also talk about marketing in general. And then we practice an elevator pitch and executives and help them with an executive summary for their business plan. So those are the training components that we have instituted. Another new training component that isn't just for the Shop Local participants is Amazon is coming and doing a training series with us too. How, it is called, let me see here, How to Start Selling on Amazon. So they have agreed to do a two-part series training with us because we pitched Shop Local to them, but they wanted this to be available to all and we agreed as well because we believe that these resources should be available to all of our clients. In regards to partnerships, I've talked about Amazon, I've talked about Square, the Economic Development Offices that we coordinate with in Howard County and having them come in and do presentations in regards to grants that are vacancies that are available to them. And then the roles and responsibilities of the business consultants. So the business consultant really facilitates those one-on-one connections, do counselings that are free, 45-minute-long counseling sessions, and the business consultant would facilitate those. Since 2017, we've counseled 323 clients with one staff member for the city of Bowie and Prince George's County. Imagine how many counseling sessions we could hold. Additionally, we're looking to expand our programmatic activities. Like I said, we started the How to Start a Business in Bowie series in English. We also would like to facilitate that in French and Spanish because of the populations that are here in the city of Bowie. So they would facilitate those training series as well and do the one-on-one counselings. Addition to that, we're going to be having them attend events. We want them to know where, we want to meet entrepreneurs where they are, where they're going for resources, and so that way they're becoming familiar with what MWBC has to offer.
Thank you so much. Those are very thoughtful responses. Just a clarifying question on the Amazon training. I guess I'm trying to understand, what benefit does it provide the city for a business that's looking to go into brick and mortar to receive training on how to be efficient on Amazon Marketplace, to not become an e-commerce competition with our brick and mortar business?
No, because everyone sells online as well. You can't have a physical storefront without selling online. And so they will actually speak to what are the benefits and should you actually be an Amazon seller? One of the first things they talk about, especially because Amazon has an Amazon homemade storefront, is to make sure that your products are trademarked and copyrighted. Otherwise... Otherwise, if you bring them on Amazon without that, then you have the opportunity of them being duplicated. So we have them come and talk about the benefits, but whenever you have a physical storefront, an online storefront is also beneficial.
Thank you for that. I think, let me just wrap up my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time. I, from what I have heard from the residents of District Four and business owners in District Four specifically, and some in the adjacent surrounding communities, the types of training support that I think are most prevalent right now are operations and hospitality pertaining to the service industry. I think we have a real challenge when it comes to service training and the quality and standards that our residents expect and what some businesses have the capacity to deliver. And so I think that is a real big challenge when you think about scaling operations, or when you look at opening a storefronts, to be able to anticipate the types of demand that you would get to come to your storefront and being prepared and in a posture to be able to receive those customers. So that's the number one training that I'll amplify. I think the second part is really being ready to, to go after resources. So it's not more so on the pitch, but it's more so, how do I design a loan application or know when it's time to get a loan versus a grant? And where do I go for those grants? And how do I devise an application that puts me in the strongest posture where I'm not going further in debt for maybe a market analysis plan that I haven't fully 100% validated? And so those are the types, if there are going to be training, those are the types of things that I would like to see. I'm going to say this again, and on behalf of my residents, I don't necessarily think my community needs more training, I think they need resources, they need actual tangible executionary things. So that means providing those marketing services for them. If you said the business counselor was going to be an actual consultant that is going to help them get into storefronts and help them negotiate with these landowners and these lease owners, and really kind of make inroads and tell them the things that most people don't know when they're going up from that process, then I'd be a lot more intrigued, which is where I see the gap. A lot of people get taken advantage of when they go into brick and mortar storefronts and they're trying to negotiate square footage, or a lease, or all these added-in fees that they don't necessarily know whether there's an ROI on those added-in fees and actually weighing out, do I go in this town center, do I go in the other town center? So if you were providing resources like that, I would see the benefit in them, the benefit in it immediately. And actually, if it came with some sort of, like, let's say, private sector partner that was supplying grants, like, I just applied for Halcyon in DC for my startup, Halcyon provides a $10,000 stipend. If it has things like that, because Halcyon has a partner called Capital One that's funding that. So if you had partnerships like that, that would make a little bit more sense to me for the city to come with X amount of dollars and meet your private sector partners with their Y dollars to make the most amount of impact. But for right now, for me, I think what you're offering is great, but I don't particularly think it fits the need for my community in District Four to receive more training. I think what they need is resources and equity and people that will actually tell them the things that most people don't know until they start the process and go through the process. So for me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all of my questions, and I look forward to seeing the outcome.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you, thank you for being here, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as you know, I'm president of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce as well, and we know that Prince George's County is comprised of 80% small businesses. So that is the core of our economy here in Prince George's County. So what I was trying to visualize is a day in the life of, of the program, but I need, I need to connect, connect the dots a little better. So this is for staff. Now, have we already committed funding to this organization? I, no, not yet. Okay.
Yes, the Maryland Women's Business Center receives an operating grant from the city each year. They receive $20,000 in the current fiscal year, and while we have not outlined the scope of work, they could receive between $10,000 and $20,000 in this coming fiscal year, within the budget you just recently approved.
Okay, thank you very much. So then the other thing is, so I have found that small businesses are usually microbusinesses that really don't understand the process, and it's always good to provide some type of support for them. So the incubator thing is a good thing. So I see June in the back, and she's going to talk a little later about Bowie BIC. And I know the city offers loans as well and counseling, and so I'm look, I always look for partnerships when it comes to, to businesses and helping them grow. So tell me a little bit about your partnering strategy. You may have talked about it a little bit, but if you talk about it again, how you plan on leveraging your partnerships?
Definitely, well, sorry, definitely, well, when looking at our small business support, we actually do partner with June and the Bowie BIC. If clients are not ready to be part of the Bowie BIC, we do kind of a referral process where they'll come to us and ask them to do some counseling, we'll do some one-on-one counseling. We do walk them through, if they don't understand how to do a profit and loss statement, we do walk them through a balance sheet statement, we walk them through how to develop marketing plans, how to have your application ready for financial assistance. We've actually recommended a number of clients to FSC First in regards to loan opportunities to help us scale their business. So that's in regards to our, our small business support and some of our partnerships there. We also partner with Bowie State University in terms of the students and the entrepreneurs. The 100 women, 100 black women of Prince George's County, we partner with them and provide counseling assistance and facilitate some training and teaching on their pitch competition. Actually, one of our, all of our clients won first, second, and third place for the 100 Black Women of Prince George's County pitch competition. So we have a number of partnerships there in terms of our small business support. For our shop local program, it's really partnering with the local jurisdictions in which we operate, and most recently with Amazon and Square for the, for a day in the life in terms of an entrepreneur that would participate in this program. What Councilmember was stating earlier about actually being in a physical storefront and knowing what the process is in terms of service quality and anticipation and types of demand, that's what's the benefit of participating in the program, is that you get to interact with clients and see, you get to bring your concept to market, test that concept, and test it with the client base there. We actually have a city of Bowie resident, business owner, that is going to be in our 2024 summer cohort in Howard County, because there wasn't an incubator here in the city of Bowie. And so they're in their day, they work one day a week, there are six participants to each cohort, and then they rotate on that Sunday. They get to facilitate being a general manager once a month and really see what it is to create time schedules, to identify window displays, to look at stock. But we're not there just to help them in terms of learning the retail components, we really want them to scale their businesses. For example, Shaw's Creation was a 2019 graduate, and we helped her scale her business from just skincare to med spa services. Upon graduation, she opened up a physical storefront at Leisure Road in Silver Spring, Maryland, and then she scaled that to include spa services. So now not only is she hiring retail storefront, but technicians as well, so service providers as well. Jonah's Furnishings is a 2003 graduate. They concentrated on furniture decor through going the shop local program. We helped them identify that it's great to actually have a wonderful product mix. So now they're including umbrellas, sorry, umbrellas, pillows, and they were able to open to a physical storefront in Fredericksburg, which is where they're from. So some of the day-to-day initiatives.
Okay, so as far as the, thank you for that answer, as long as the pipeline is concerned, I heard the mayor talk about, you know, there would have to be some measures to see whether or not the programs were success, successful. How long does it take from the point of incubation to the point of success? What's that pipeline look like? How long is that timeframe?
That, I would say, it's going to depend on each business. Some businesses, when they participate, we look at doing, not overhaul, but maybe their packaging isn't right. And so we work with them in terms of that, in terms of identifying how to make their packaging more sell-through. Have them identify, okay, you brought your product to market and tested it, and it wasn't the right product mix. What product mix should you have? So I think it depends. We've had people that have, excuse me, entrepreneurs that have graduated the program and then went on and met with property managers and solidified a space right after, to particularly within Rockville Town Square that have been there since they've graduated the program, but it really depends on the business.
So it, yeah, yeah, so it depends on how mature they are in their, their development process around their product.
Correct.
And their skills to manage the sales of their product.
Correct.
Okay, and then the space comes along with this whole scenario, you're looking at renting space, too?
Yes. So we've identified a 4,000-square-foot space, which would allow for 12 graduates, so every six months, so a total of 24 participants a year. In addition to that, it would allow for training space, so all city of Bowie businesses could come and participate in training, so that Amazon training. We also do trainings that focus on how to incorporate AI into your business operations. Everyone could participate in those, it would not be just for the shop local cohort.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Would you like to go, Councilwoman Endubamadu, and then I'll go to you, Councilwoman Truesdale?
Sorry, I, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of offer, I know this meeting is being recorded, so if I talk too fast, it'll be on the recording available. These are the changes that I'd like to see in the program to be able to support it. Number one, a business mentorship component, so pairing newer businesses with more mature businesses that are already established, so they can get direct insight from already successful businesses. Sorry, and I just wrote all this out while you were talking. Number two, a private sector partner that provides grant opportunities. So a private sector partner like a Square, like an Amazon, like others, to provide actual grants to these business owners so they can get funding. Number three, more resources. Number four is tailored training programs that meet the needs of Bowie. So specific to the challenges that retail partners have in Bowie and our constituents have, I'd like to see tailored programs, training programs tailored to prepare these businesses that would come to Bowie to be able to meet that need. Number five is, it would have to be beyond the Bowie Town Center. Again, let me repeat, I do not support supporting operations at the Bowie Town Center, I do believe that property owner needs to pull their weight. Number six, partnership with the Wakeif, Truist Bank, Bank of America, other lending partners to be able to have a pipeline for these businesses to be able to get loans in an expedited timeframe, and for them to have a direct point of contact, so they're not just going through the general website. Wakeif is Washington Area Community Investment Fund Finance, they're a DC-based bank. Then number seven, help negotiating the lease, so a person that would actually help them negotiate the lease and understand the ins and outs of square foot, pricing per square footage, et cetera, et cetera. And then the last one, number eight, you talked about you wanted to go into a 4,000-square-foot space. I remember when we talked on this body about the four storage units that are coming to the city of Bowie, they, each one of those storage units are provided, are required to provide 1,200 square foot of free community nonprofit space. I'd like to see you guys go into one of those spaces. So perhaps connecting with one of those storage facility owners to go into that face, space for free, so we don't have to foot the bill for a new space, since that's something that they're required to provide to our community for resources that impact our community at no cost to the nonprofit entity. So essentially connecting with one of those storage facility owners to leverage, utilize one of those 1,200, 1,200 square foot spaces, so that you can go there for free, and then we could take that cost out of the program. Those are the changes that I'd like to see to be able to support.
Can I, can I speak to Councilmember? Thank you for those great points, Councilmember. And you actually brought up a wonderful note there in regards to Wakeif. We've actually been invited to speak on the Women's Summit on 6/20 in regards to incubators and our retail incubator specifically, and we're also having a, a member of Wakeif come and talk about the funding opportunities that are available through that organization. So thank you for jogging my memory on that.
Awesome, if I can lend a hand, I know their new CEO that just was appointed, if I can lend a hand, please reach out and let me know.
Wonderful, will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donat, a question. I want to thank you for kind of visualizing and giving us more clarity on the shop local and what it looks like on a day-to-day. Was there a specific reason you, you chose the town center, Bowie Town Center?
Yes, there was a couple of reasons. One, the ease of getting off the highway, two, the fact that I believe there's a great connection to the Bowie State University students and facilitated foot traffic. We want to definitely bring the university together with this as well. In terms of the entrepreneurship there, there's great students that are entrepreneurs and developing wonderful ideas, and so those were two of the main reasons that we had chosen.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a blueprint of shop locals somewhere else?
Yes, I could share that.
In which, can you share that?
We have Rockville Town Square, that's 2,000 square feet, Savage Mill, Maryland, that's going to be a little under 2,000 square feet, and Old Town, not Old Town, Old Eloquent City off of Main Street, the Howard County Community Center.
So this, this would be one of the bigger ones, right?
This would be our biggest one.
24 graduates, 12 per, per graduate class?
Correct. And just in this last cohort for the summer 2024, we received, we received close to 50 applications for only 18 openings.
So, thank you, thank you so much. So in, in the past 20, in the past, there's been an entrepreneurial ecosystem that has been small businesses investing in other small businesses. That's what we were doing in 97, that's what we were doing in 2001, especially with small businesses of, of, of color and minority and, or just, just kind of unfortunate to be able to get a SBA loan. That, that, I started a business with, with $2 and a prayer and building relationships in terms of doing the service that I was able to provide as a barber. Now, if I had these resources, I would still have hair on my head, because I, I, I learned the hard way in a, in a lot of, in a lot of cases, but a, a, a brother by the name, older guy by the name of Scott, who had Scott's Barber Shop, that I worked at Scott's Barber Shop for five years, and he invested in, in my startup. It didn't cost a lot of money to start a small business, it don't cost a lot of money to start small business, that's why they call it small, but they're impactful. And, and if you do the numbers in terms of 23, 25-year business been in a community, that is, that, that succeeds, that, that, that really succeeds the amount of, of, of money that, you know, you think that you need to start. He helped me, and in terms, I paid him, and, and, and guess what I did? I did that same, I did that same thing to someone else that started a barber shop in District Two, Jason's Barber Shop. Now, I knew how to understand and negotiate, deal with the landlords and things, that sort, so guess what? We were able to diversify. And a store, Desert Junkie, that is off in Happles Road, she was going to, she was going to have her store in Laura. I said, well, come to Bowie, I'm not even on the council at this point, I'm just working, right? And it's the small business, it's always been an eco, a system that has been in gap. And what I, what I see from, what I hear from your presentation earlier this year, and what I see now, I think is a great opportunity for not only the city, not only for the Bowie Town Center, but other businesses that is around in other districts as well, and that's at the same time for this, for the county. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to.
I guess at this point, I would ask you, Councilman, do you have an ask for us at this time?
Yes, 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 I, my, my ask is to request that, that we amend, that we can fund this program, and that's, that's my ask.
And that's at the 101?
Yes, that's.
Councilman Brady, were you going to say something? I thought you.
I'm just going to say, for the staff, to, to listen to staff's information about whether and how we do that.
Okay, city staff, would you be able to look at what we would need to do to be able to do that?
Assuming we, we choose to, but at this point, what do we take to do that?
Yeah, we can go back and take a look at the budget, the numbers and see if they're somewhere in the budget that was recently passed, that there's some, some, some way to do that without a budget amendment. Is that what you're asking me to do, right? All right, I can do.
Would you look into that, please, City Ban? Did you want to say something, Councilman? I want to recognize.
Yes, sir, we can, well, let's go back and take a look at it, and then we come back the next meeting and, and tell you specifically where the money would come from.
Yes, Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to have an opportunity to visit.
I would also like to have an opportunity to visit the incubator in Rockville. I think you said it was in Rockville?
Yes.
To see and better understand it. Because if it's more tangible, I'd be better able to understand what was going on. But I agree with Councilman Truesdale. You know, the US economy is made on the back of small businesses. And whatever we can do, I find that through my experiences, because my husband and I own a small business, I own a small consulting firm. It's not a firm, it's a consulting business. But the, the point is, I understand the challenges and the difficulties. But I also understand when people have small businesses, they're all focused around getting money. They never take the time, learn how to do it well. And that's why they don't have longevity in their businesses. So whatever I can do to help support that, I will. So I would like, as staff does their research, I would like to have an opportunity to go up to Rockville and, and visit the incubator center. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman DeFour?
Wolf. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for, thank you for, for being here this evening. Very much appreciate your, your sharing with us, your, your plans. I want to turn to staff just for a quick moment. As you're going back and, and thinking through and looking at what next steps are on this, maybe you could put together some rough parameters on, so that we identify clearly what it is we're looking for and what the parameters of the agreement might look like so that we can get a good feel for, for that before you make any, any commitments. I do think that anything we can do, I'm very much committed to, you know, support for small businesses in the city of Bowie. You know, in particular, I know that the town center is a potential, you know, problem area for us. Retail in general is, is critical. We've heard it from our constituents. And I think that it would be beneficial for us to be able to do something along those lines. Of course, consistent with, as you would expect, the value proposition that we're getting. But I'm very much pleased that you're able to be here with us this evening and share what you have so far. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, Councilwoman Andebomadu?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo the comments that have already been made and the support that this body has for small businesses. I remember Councilmember Truesdale made, made a reference to Desert Junkie and their property location in the Bowie Town Center. Well, let me be clear about their story and why they're no longer in the Bowie Town Center. She, I know she has two. She has one in, by Bowie High School. And she has a second one in the Bowie Town Center. But it's, it's under the same umbrella, owned by the same owner named Alexis. And I have had conversations with her. The story that Alexis, the owner of the entire entity, had the conversation that she had with me was part of the practices that Bowie Town Center subject her business to, which meant that when she bought the lease, she was charged $300 a month for a marketing fee. Basically told that she was, the Bowie Town Center would market her facility and her business to other residents to drive traffic. What ended up happening is that never happened. And she was stuck with a $300 a month bill and was never able to get the traffic that was promised to her by the Bowie Town Center. So I'm not saying here that I don't support small businesses and I don't want to see your program come to fruition. What I would like to do is actually solve the problem that a lot of these small businesses are facing. Because you can do everything that you can do to provide training for these small businesses. And then they go into these land developments and the, owned by these landowners are subject to the same treatment. And then they don't survive regardless of the training that you provide them. So my whole point is about the sustainability and the viability of them as a small business. Tired of seeing people go into small businesses, open small businesses, being shown the land and given all these promises. And then what ends up happening? They go out of business and they end up in debt. And that's not fair to our community members. So what I'm after is the sustainability of the program. So what I would like to see, when you do come back, I would love an opportunity to visit the Rockville location. But I would also like to see some of these changes that I suggested or recommended, the ones that you feel like are appropriate, because you're the expert here. You know this better than I do. I'd like to see some of those changes reflected in the program that would be delivered to Bowie and to be opened up beyond the Bowie Town Center. I understand that the Bowie Town Center is right off of 50 and it's east access. But there are a number of other shopping centers that might even make more sense for a small business. Let's say you have a person that is doing e-commerce that won't be ready for another two years. You've got Mill Branch Crossing that will be up by then. You've got Southlake. You've got other shopping centers that might make more sense for those small businesses, given that their demographic makeup. Southlake is geared towards entertainment and media. So if you have a business that aligns with that more, that's trying to attract clientele that's going to be coming in for tourism, for Liberty Sports Park, it might make more sense for them to be in Southlake than it would make for them to Bowie and be in the Bowie Town Center. So my comments are to look at this holistically. And I'm not saying that you're not, but that's my role as a council member to offer that insight and that feedback so that you can design the best program possible to be able to support the sustainability and the viability of the small businesses in the city of Bowie. So I would love to see those changes when you come back and what you end up coming up with and designing a program that is much more targeted towards the challenges that we find ourselves facing in the city of Bowie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we're going to need to wrap this up. I'll give you the last word, Councilwoman. Councilman, go right ahead, then I'll come, if you can wait, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I promise to be brief. I know we've been chatting a lot. I just want to say two quick things. One, I just want to say thank you to you and the Maryland Women Business Center. I know that you came to all of our meetings during the budget session. You've given us many presentations. I just want to affirm you guys have a stellar reputation, right? In the state and in the region. And I'm grateful for the work that you do. And I just want to say a big thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Truesdale, for bringing this forward again tonight. One of the things that I really appreciate about my colleague is that he's a true brick and mortar business owner. It's been a while since we've had one in the community. I really appreciate having his voice, in particular for that community, which is struggling. It is really hard out there, retail in particular. We got a lot of presentations in the last two years from big and small retail about how hard it is. So I really appreciate my colleague. I know we had a lot of discussion tonight. I look forward to continuing the conversation. Look forward to visiting the location in Rockville as well. Be joining my, my colleagues for that. And I just want to say thank you again and thank you, sir. And I look forward to our continued conversations.
Yes, thank you again, Ms. Donner. Thank you for the comment. In terms of, I think it's so important that we educate in the resources, having the resources is, is, is information is so important. You have some businesses that don't need, they're startups. Then you have some businesses that need to scale. And in 2017, we, we were in that, we was in that crossroad to where we had to scale. We didn't know how. But good, good thing I've been going to those big, big innovation, the innovation classes they used, they have at Bowie State in the early 2000s. But at the same time, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time up. We were able to scale our POS system. And we were able to put that in. And that allowed us to open, not only to stay open during the pandemic, but we opened businesses that were closing. And we turned them into other businesses. So it's, I thank you for, for the presentation again. I look forward to coming out of Rockville as well. And thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you all.
All right, we will now be moving on to item C, the CIP projects fund balance explanation. And I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Matthews, are you going to lead off on this or the city manager?
I guess I will, Mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. H. Byron Matthews, Finance Director for the city of Bowie. During our last budget work session, I was asked to provide a list of the CIP projects that were allocated funds from the 2019 bond proceeds. Staff has provided that report, outlines the projects that indicated to council how the money was going to be spent. And we've shown you a breakdown of that over 2022, 23, and 24, with a portion of that for 25. If there's any questions, I'll be able to try to address them the best I can.
Mr. Matthews, I'll ask you, and bear with me, because it may be here and I'm just not seeing it. For fiscal year 25.
Yes, sir.
What, what, we had monies that were in the CIP for that, that was on. And just for everyone to be caught up to speed, what it was is we were talking about the money that we used for the ice arena. That when we didn't do that, that we had that money. And we just wanted to make sure that that money was spent. Very useful, we used it for other CIP programs. And so we were just showing and wanted to have transparency with everyone to see that that money was used for some important CIP projects within the city. But we also wanted to see and make sure that with the last, we found in this last budget, of that 18 million plus that we had, 10 million of it was still even left from that 2020 budget. So what I wanted to say to everyone is that's what we were doing, I think, just to show everyone in the community and the council members and everyone how that money was spent and how we had over 18 million of that. And we've used it for projects. We also had 10 million still remaining at this time that we approved for next year's budget. And Byron, if you could, Mr. Matthew, can you give us what those projects are for that 10 million and what district they're in?
Mr. Mayor, the way the budget lays out for FY '25, of the money from the Bowie bond sale, we're going to be using $6,309,300. Again, I've provided council with a list of these projects. This will be coming right out of the adopted budget book on, I have a page number for you as yet, we haven't gone to print. But it's located in the capital projects fund section of the budget. It's called revenue estimates. And it's under the appropriated fund balance. We have several projects there. Land acquisition, energy efficiency improvements. We have the accessibility improvements, energy, I mean, emergency management center. We have money going to the city hall as well as facilities security. The railroad museum will be using funding. Public Works main facility for their major salt bin will be using funds for that. As well as the streets and utilities building, Bowie Trails master plan, Centennial Park, the gymnasium, the playhouse, the golf course, stormwater management projects, public art, as well as Tanglewood Park and Serene Way Park. And last but not least, Chesapeake Bay. Those total the $6,309,300 of the monies we will spend. Initially, when we proposed the budget to you, Mayor, we were actually going to use the $7,186,300. But we received some grant funding for Allen Pond and for the historical site. So we were able to shift that money around. And that's why we have some money kind of left over that we can use for the current expenditures that are coming in for FY '24 as well as projected costs for projects in FY '25.
All right, Mr. Matthews, I would like to say thank you because I know this took time and you did that. But what I would like to see is, in one space, please, to provide that information, as you were just talking about it, on this sheet as well, so that the public doesn't have to go back to the budget and look and find those CIP, if you could. And because it's something we want to share with them. And that goes to that. So if you would, if you could break out what we're planning to continue to spend in fiscal '24 and then what we'll use on that money in fiscal year '25 and just lay it out as you've done the other one, I would be really, I think, a good thing for the community to see. And have it in one place, if you don't mind, please.
No problem, Mayor, I'll do that.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions at this time? Any questions? Yes, please go right ahead. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need a point of clarification, since I'm still trying to understand processes. So by using the bond sale funds in fiscal year '25, what we in essence have done is forward-funded capital improvement projects, the list that normally would not have been paid if we didn't have a bond, wouldn't have been paid through the bond. But we had the bond money, so we're using it for that.
Good evening, Councilwoman Rogers. How are you?
Very well.
As you know, the city of Bowie does a pay-as-you-go financing for most of the CIP projects. And we only go to the bond market when it's a major funding project, such as City Hall and the Ice Arena. Both of those buildings were very expensive. I think the City Hall was around 20 million and the proposed Ice Arena is about 30 million. Council, back in 2022 and 2023, along with 2024, re-appropriated the money from the Ice Arena bond sale. Had we not done that, the money would have to come from the general fund as a transfer, thus reducing the fund balance at a much faster rate than it's currently happening now.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Matthews? If not, Mr. Matthews, if you could get that to us and then we'll make sure to put it on the site again and maybe just have it where we send it out so that people can take a look at it and have it all at their fingertips. And again, thank you for the effort you put into this, we appreciate it. And if you could show the districts as well. And again, I thought this was a great job. Thank you. All right, having heard that, we will now move to our new business. And at this time, we have a legislative session wrap-up. From Cornerstone, how are you doing, Mr. Deuce?
I'm fantastic, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for having us. Christopher Deuce with Cornerstone Government Affairs. Just going to give you guys a quick presentation. It's actually all words, so I'm sorry that there's no visuals here. But I'll, I'll be relatively brief. Just about the work that we did during the legislative session that ended on April the 8th. The first thing I want to highlight is we were, let me just start with the budget. This was a very, very tough year for the state of Maryland, as you all are aware. There were massive write-downs with regards to how much money was actually going to be accessible and available. As everybody will tell you, the ARPA funding has now gone very, it's basically gone now. And so there's a lot of just lacking in access to funding. That being said, we did manage to secure two good initiatives for the city, one being $250,000 towards the tuberculosis issue that you guys have been working on for multiple years now. And then $25,000 towards the volunteer fire department driveway concerns that, that were brought up basically December of last year. So we did make progress. However, as you all know, there's still much more work to be done, specifically with regards to tuberculosis. I think the mayor and the rest of you guys have done a phenomenal job of securing federal funding towards that initiative as well. And we're going to continue to find ways around to, to, to ensure that tuberculosis is something that is taken care of. I will say, after having some conversations with members of the budgetary committees, one of the things that was mentioned was that, that as we are looking forward to the 2025 legislative session, that we do need to be cognizant that the deficits are going to continue, just something to be aware of. And that if we are going to be making specific budget asks, one of the things that was mentioned to me was that we need to be considering open and closed type, you know, initiatives. Stuff that the state can say, we did this this year and it's taken care of and it's finished. Whereas in other initiatives, what we're seeing with regards to other municipalities, those things are just not getting funded. They're finding ways to cut back. And so if we can just consider initiatives, and this is, you know, an open conversation to members of the council, that can be wrapped up within one session. That's just something that was highlighted. Does not mean necessarily that we have to follow those initiatives. I'm just telling you what was informed, what was, what was said to me. The second thing is that we are planning with regards to Cornerstone and the council members is just to have the conversations with the District 23 delegation far earlier. I know I've been talking to the mayor about this. I've been talking to the members of the council to kind of have the conversation really now, to have it as soon as we possibly can. So that way, we are all aligned on what those initiatives are going to be. are going to be, and can kind of alleviate any concerns from the district, uh, members and all those kind of, uh, issues now, and then kind of when we're, so we're walking in a little more aligned when it comes to the twenty twenty-five legislative session. Other considerations that I, I think we should just be looking at when it comes to the budget is just, you know, trying to find ways that we can align. You know, the city of Bowie is not the other, uh, municipalities that exist within the district. You guys are very unique. You're very special, and you do an incredible work here. So we just have to consider things like economic development and other things that are under consideration, um, that the council members, not the council members, I apologize, as the delegation members can get behind and support. However, you guys are the bosses on this one, so we default to whatever you want to do, but just know that we'll be working very, very diligently with District Twenty-three, as well as you all, to ensure that we're all aligned coming into, uh, session twenty twenty-five. The other two initiatives that I wanted to quickly highlight as I wrap this up is House Bill Ten Fifty-nine. This was the zoning authority, a bill that we worked on. Um, the bill did not pass this year. We tried to, uh, shift it to a, uh, working session, kind of like a interim study, uh, that also just did not go the way, uh, that we would have liked it to have gone this year, but we will be working with all the state members, including the, the various members of, uh, the, both, mm, I'm bad, Prince George's County delegation and others, to kind of find a path forward. There is a middle ground there. We just have to continue to work towards it. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight, uh, House Bill Fifteen Twenty-four, which transitioned the Maryland Jockey Club to the Maryland Theroe Bed Racing Operating Authority. Uh, the parts of that bill, which is pretty large, that affects the city, uh, just has to do with the conveyance. It got delayed again by one more year, so now we will be taking possession of it December twenty twenty-five, and, um, it does give us some time to make, uh, some moves so that it's in, in the best interest of the city of Bowie. Those are pretty much all of the things that I wanted to highlight. I know I talk relatively fast, but as, uh, the councilwoman said before, this is being recorded, so I'm sure somebody can play it again, but slow it down a little bit. Um, but by that, uh, I will close out budget issues, zoning, and the, uh, racetrack. I'm open to answer any questions you may have.
If you could-
Yes, sir.
We talked about trying to get with our, uh, senator and delegates-
Yes.
Uh, as soon as possible to do that, and seeing if we could schedule maybe a, a lunch or dinner-
Yes.
Um, at, at a local restaurant or place to do that. Uh, can you help facilitate that and look at where the, and where is that at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. So I have had preliminary conversations with a variety of delegation members. Nobody has, has told me no. It's just a matter of finding the right time on the calendar. It seems as if the later part of June or the early part of July is when most individuals will be available, so we can meet in person. Um, I will be reaching out. I'll probably just, uh, be reaching out to you, Mayor, other members of the council, to try to find the, a good location that we can all meet, but I know that they are open to that.
Okay, good, because I, I think you're absolutely right. We just need to get on it as soon as possible-
Yeah.
To, uh, make sure we're on one accord, too, of what they will or will not support.
Indeed.
I as well know that going in. Um, having said that, I'd see councilwoman, no? Anybody have any other questions? Councilmember or staff?
Uh, to your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, about getting together, I was just gonna suggest, would it be helpful if we had staff poll council to get a few days when councils have been, uh, why are they?
Thank you.
I can't tell what-
Thank you, council.
All right. They're being-
We're being silly at this late hour.
Thank you.
That's what I need, yeah.
All right. So if, if there's no objection, I would just throw that out, so we can get some dates-
All right, thank you.
For the delegation.
So, um, at this time, Councilwoman Enda Bhamadu, then we will go to councilmember Brady.
Um, I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I do want to echo and like your emphasis on the economic development comment that you made. I did hear from a number of residents that some residents, um, especially on the South Bowie side, between South Bowie and District Three are exploring establishing a community development corporation. So it'll be interesting to kind of see how that evolves, especially given the next session. But I look forward to the conversation with our state senators and our general assembly members around economic development, and just to hear your thoughts there and what you think we would be able to get out of the state for those efforts. Thank you.
That was the question?
Any questions?
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I'm sorry, just-
Councilmember Brady.
So you're only accepting questions? Is that what? I'm just kidding. Uh, thank you for your effort last time. Um, it is a little frustrating, uh, at our legislative dinner last fall, I think November was it, or December?
December.
Whatever it was. Uh, we said we would meet quarterly, and it's nine months and eight months later, and we're, we get to meet. So we need to, we need to honor that commitment because we need to kind of talk and what have you, and I think we need to somehow bring in the two at-large county council members into our group. Uh, they were absent in that last meeting, so that would be most helpful. Three items. The first, I'd like to inform you, I did casually, but formally, we, uh, last week put in a legislative action request for consideration by the Maryland Municipal League to seek a half-cent, uh, sales tax piggyback on top of the state for municipalities to, uh, enabling legislation to allow them to do that. I seriously doubt it, it'll fly, but at least it'll start the conversation that, uh, cities and municipalities need new revenue sources. So if nothing else, it'll get that conversation, but who knows? Until we ask, we, uh, if we don't ask, we definitely won't get it, but if we ask, we may get it, and that would be something that would be help, you know, we could help, use your help in getting that moving forward. Um, the second is, I think we need a new dynamic and a more political approach to dealing with traffic congestion on three oh one, and we have accepted as a, um, a, a, a goal for the council to act on that. If you talk to state highways, they have grandiose plans that are hundreds of millions of dollars that'll probably never come to fruition. Uh, we need to convince the, 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 those that are in the, the shakers, the movers in the political structure that we need to address that, bring it up, uh, quickly. And then the last is, we also, uh, placed a, uh, goal on ourselves, council, in looking at what it is we made by economic development with the possibility of going down the road to establishing an economic development, um, uh, commission, yeah, a formal organization to, to do that for Bowie, and in all likelihood, we will need assistance from the state and probably the state legislature on that. So these are three areas that I just alert you to, uh, that we're looking at, and we appreciate any feedback, uh, assistance or critique, even, even negative comments would be appreciated if it's helpful in the whole process. So, but I thank you for what you did the last session and look forward to the next session. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember?
So sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, also just want to formally request staff and our lobbyists to please include, uh, school board members, Apuria Miller, in any legislative discussions. I heard from multiple members of our state delegation that given all the changes going on in education, it'd be exceedingly helpful to have her as a regular participant in these meetings, given what's coming down the pike, and obviously our county council member, uh, Ingrid Watson, as well as our at-large members. Thank you.
Okay. If no other questions, uh, thank you so very much, Mr. Deuce.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. We will now move on to item B in new business, and that's the Bowie Business Incubator update.
I see my presentation here on the screen. I just don't know how, how we're gonna get it up. There we go. Okay, so I'm assuming that this might be the clicker. Well, we'll see. We're gonna go. Greetings, um, Mayor Adams, um, Mayor Protem Wolfley, and federal, federal city council members, as well as city of Bowie staff. I'm June Evans. I am the executive director for the Bowie Business Innovation Center, and it's a pleasure for me to report to you today, um, for twenty twenty-four. Let's see. Yeah, there you go. Um, I'll go over, um, just so you guys can briefly see, we are growing and expanding. We have a team of, of five, uh, beautiful women that are running the Bowie Business Innovation Center over here in the city of Bowie. Uh, we also have some tremendous and phenomenal board members, and I think you may recognize one of them up there. Might be a familiar face. Um, just a brief overview of the Bowie BIC, um, as which, which we're known as, the Bowie BIC. Uh, we are a business accelerator, um, and we help our, the businesses here in the city of Bowie and throughout the Prince George's County, and even throughout the Washington metropolitan area, we help businesses scale. That's basically what we do. Um, we help businesses become bankable. We help our businesses and equip them to pursue contracts, whether they're government contracts or even the private, uh, commercial contracts. Um, and we just help businesses elevate their performance in all areas of growth and expansion. This year, the Bowie BIC underwent a new brand, um, and we hope that, uh, you, um, as well as those businesses here in the city can get behind our brand and our identity. Um, the Bowie BIC wanted to, uh, come across to our businesses as more open and flexible and innovative, and be able to meet those businesses where they are. And out of that brand, we have five, what we consider identity, that we, when we communicate to the businesses here, we want them to know that we are helping them pursue maximum excellence, right? Operate at an excellent performance. We want to educate them, um, through our networks of subject matter experts of, of everything that you could think of that can help your business grow, from the operations, from finances, to human capital, everything you need to scale a business. We want the businesses to know we are here for them. We want to equip our businesses through mentorship and technical assistance, um, and to be able to connect them to the resources, and a lot of times it takes that one-on-one connection with the businesses and to get them over the hump, right, and get them to that next level. And we want to elevate our businesses to operate in a higher revenue bracket, at a higher level, even if it's customer service, right? We want to elevate them, and we also want to help the businesses expand, if that's what they need to do, and if that's where they are, that's what we want to do, to help them expand. We, we have five flagship programs that we operate on a regular basis. Um, our eight-day accelerator, our Innovate Bowie, our capital accelerator, our Bowie BIC membership program, and recently the Center of Excellence for Eight-Day Government Contracting. Now, let's take a look at what we've done this year. I call it Bowie BIC by the numbers for F Y twenty-four. Our accelerators, we have two major accelerators that we offer multiple times throughout the year, and we focus on those accelerators because they allow us to, um, build a relationship with businesses because we work with them over the course of time. So we're able to, to get to know them and identify their pain points and help them to accelerate. We graduated a hundred and forty-six businesses in total through the Bowie BIC this year and just the two accelerators alone. We have the Bowie BIC membership program, which is a part of our small incubator with, uh, located at the college with the Bowie State University. We don't have a lot of space there, but the little space that we have, we try to maximize it as much as we can. So we're able to have eleven small businesses that are either, what we consider tenants. We have three that are actual tenants. They actually have office space. One business has an office space by themselves. The other two businesses share an office space. Then the other eight businesses are affiliate members, which means they pay to just have access to our services on a regular basis whenever they need. And we supply our businesses with a certified growth coach. So they have access to that growth coach. They meet with them monthly. They, um, they can come and they can, they let them know what they need, and we are there to help them get those resources. And looking at the hundred and forty-six businesses that have gone through our accelerators this year, a, a total of those businesses, they, they have generated over eighty-five million dollars. Okay? Now, as you know, my colleague, Kier Denette, was up here, you know, with the Women Business, Maryland Business Center, the Small Business Development Center. The Bowie BIC offers them office space as well. So we're part of creating that entrepreneurial ecosystem here in the city of Bowie. Anyone that comes inside the Bowie BIC can have access at any time to any of the resources at their fingertips. And as you know, unlike College Park or some of the other areas, it's much easier for a business to pull up and park and get out and come to the, to the Bowie BIC and get those resources. But it's very important that you understand that, because what we want to do is, we want to meet every business where they are. Now, I said we're an accelerator. We focus on scaling. But the Maryland Women Business Center and the Small Business Development Center, they, they don't focus on scaling. So when you are, when you come in and you're just like, I just want to start a business, and I just don't know what to do, our partners right there with us will walk them over and will say, hey, we got a client for you. Can you help them get started? And immediately when they are finished working with them, they're able to refer them right back to the Bowie BIC for the other type of accelerated resources that we offer. So that makes it easier for the small businesses, and it, it allows us to keep our businesses close to us, and we're able to even share resources amongst each other to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to help those businesses grow. So collectively, we've touched thousands of businesses this year, but just with the Bowie BIC alone, regardless of where the businesses come from, we have worked with a hundred, I mean, nine hundred and one businesses this year. This is a record numbers for us. We are, we are growing, and we are excited about the number of businesses that we're touching. If you kind of bump it down to the county of Prince George's County, two hundred and sixty-seven businesses this year. And then, let's look at the city of Bowie. We have touched and worked with and served a hundred and seventy-seven businesses in the city of Bowie this, this year alone. So when you look at that, twenty percent of our entire servicing of businesses are from businesses here in the city of Bowie. We can, I, I broke things down from each flagship program because that's how we kind of focus our, our resources. With our eight-day accelerator, which is our largest accelerator, which works with businesses in the eight-day program, and it allows them to come in and learn the ins and outs of the eight-day program, and how to navigate that federal marketplace, and leverage what they have for greater success. This year, two of our businesses here in the city of Bowie were accepted into our program. Um, those two businesses totaled up two-point-two million dollars in revenue, and together they hire sixteen employees here. Our capital accelerator focuses on access to capital, and this is very important, and we're working on strengthening this accelerator because what we find, when you work with small businesses and you identify their pain points, a lot of their pain points come from capital, and a lot of it is access to capital. And yes, it's having resources to get the capital, but it's also making sure that the businesses' financial systems, accounting systems are in place, and that they're, 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 they're having proper accounting practices. So our capital accelerator really focuses on helping them understand financing, understand how to, um, set up their financial systems, how to access that capital, and if they're not ready to access capital in certain ways, we actually have alternative lenders that are there that can work with them. We have credit counselors that are there that can help them strengthen their credit, whatever it is to tighten that piece up, because that's going to get them over the hump. That's what the capital accelerator is there to help them do. Fifteen Bowie businesses participated and were accepted into the capital accelerator this year. Together, they totaled seven-point-two million dollars in revenue, and they have eighty-nine employings amongst them here, working in the city of Bowie. Um, once again, the Bowie BIC membership, eleven Bowie businesses and a part of our membership program, one-point-eight million dollars in revenue, and together they hire fourteen employees. We offer the Innovate Bowie every year. Bowie, Innovate Bowie has been one of our, um, it, it typically is a one-day event that allows people or small businesses to come to the city of Bowie and get excited about the city of Bowie, and understand that the city of Bowie is an innovative place, and understand our entrepreneurial ecosystem, because we want them to see Bowie as the place for them to set up shop, um, you know, here in the city of Bowie. Um, this year, twenty-six, um, businesses in the city of Bowie came out to our Innovate Bowie and continued to start working with us on- and continue to start working with us on establishing products. We connected them with a business coach that is helping them work with developing their products. So we want to brand Bowie as that innovative place to start your business. We've also this year decided to do another program that was focused on the city of Bowie and it's called, it was, we titled it Franchise One-on-One. We figured, we wanted to, we wanted to see how we can participate a little bit more in helping to get businesses started and launched in storefronts here in the city of Bowie. And so our Franchise One-on-One series, we had 35 entrepreneurs and some of them were senior-level business folks who was getting ready to retire and thought that starting a franchise might be a good thing, you know, for, for post-retirement. But eight of those were Bowie residents. And they were interested in looking at, at franchise, opening a franchise within the city of Bowie. And so what we plan to do, we did that in, in May. But what we plan to do is we plan to continue that this year through FY '25. And we are going to look at how we can add more resources to helping those businesses actually try to open that franchise here in the city of Bowie. So that's one of the things that we are keeping under our Innovate Bowie for, for FY '25. Lastly, this is not a flagship program, but I always like to report about our open doors. Because our open doors is exactly what we call it. It's, it's an open door. And it allows businesses to get to know us and know that we're here. Businesses can come in and they can receive subject matter expert support, one-on-one support with, an expert can be in QuickBooks. It could be in accounting. It could be in marketing and sales. It could be in access to capital. It could be just about anything you can think of that you would need to, to grow your business. And what we do is we work with those businesses. We help, they only get 30 minutes. It's free to the businesses. They only get 30 minutes. But we work with them to formulate their questions so that they know that when, you know, because time is money, that when they're in front of that subject matter expert, what do you need? Because you want to get that information and take it and move quickly and, and apply it to your business. And this year, 35 businesses, or 35 businesses in the city went through our open door sessions this year. So the Bowie Business Innovation Center, we're built on partnerships. We're big on partnerships. And one of our largest partner is the Bowie State University. And with that partnership, we recently launched the Center of Excellence for 8A Government Contracting. With just a brief, the, the, we call it the 8A COE. It's designed to expand our Bowie BIC 8A accelerator through the HBCU network. It is also designed to help 8A firms partner with HBCUs to pursue federal procurement opportunities. Since we received the grant, we've hired a program manager for the program. In November, we executed our Bowie State subcontract agreement. We have an approved approach for the program that our board approved in January. And in February, we had identified 14 8A firms that have signed commitment letters that want to participate in this program. We have put out a solicitation for our learning management system that's going to house all the training and collaboration activities that are going to take place. We've also had Bowie State worked very hard to have eight HBCUs sign commitments letters thus far to participating in the program. And in July, we are planning to kick off our training and coaching series that aligns with the Center of Excellence for 8A Government Contracting. And as you can see, these are our standing partners that we love so dearly and continue to work with them. And they help us to, to grow the program. But we're just super excited and we're so thankful for the city and all that you do. And we are so happy to report to you this evening. Thank you.
My thank you, we appreciate that. I would like to say that it has played a major role in helping businesses, particularly with the 8A accelerators and all. As you may know, I've been through there, helping the council and do some other things and helping with that. And one of the things that I would ask you, it's, it's a little bit off track, but with the attack on the current 8A program and the scrutiny going, were you able to assist 8A firms when they needed to go back and create those statements that they needed to then resubmit to, to the SBA? Is that a part of what you were able to?
Yes, we actually did that through the 8A accelerator program. And one of our board members is Palora Mazza, was represented on our board. And they are at the forefront of the crisis. And they were able to help us to provide information to those businesses on how to formulate those, those statements because that was, that was critical. But I can tell you this too. What, what was even more helpful this year with the 8A accelerator during this crisis was our partners with the SBA. And I think that's what makes the program so special because the SBA is intricately a part of that program. They are, they participate on every session, every planning session. And when we started this, we didn't know how it was going to go. It, it could have went one way, it could, it could have been bad or it could have been good. But it actually was, it went very well. We actually had more businesses apply this year than in the past. We actually had a waiting list for two cohorts. So we had overflow. But what helped a lot is those team members with the SBA came to it and they were honest. They were upfront. And they told, you know, they, they let the people, they let the businesses tell their story. They let them get it off their chest. And then we moved on. And, and be honest with you, that, that's all they needed at that time.
Good, very well. I will open it up. Are there any questions that any of the council members have at this time? Hearing none, I'd just like to say again, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Brady, good.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I was looking to see if anyone else had more substantial questions than I. Earlier, we, we had a briefing from the Bowie, the women's. It seems that it's not redundancy, their group and your group, but rather it's kind of a, you complement each other, if you will. There are areas that they specialize in and likewise with you and you are a feeder to them and, and back. So how does, how well is that relationship going? And is it, is it, do you, in your mind, do you think it's a success in doing it that way?
Yes, it is going extremely well. And I was here, you know, if I wasn't presenting today, I would have been here supporting Danette to give her presentation. I know about the retail incubator. We've talked about it, trying to bring it here to the city of Bowie. So I support that effort. Because in our circle, like you said, all of us have our area expertise and we don't want to duplicate that. And, and I can say with our partners, they respect that. And we meet and they say, hey, so you have the 8A accelerator. So you know what, June? We're going to start a program that's going to help businesses learn how to get certified. Great, because we want them already certified. So that's how it works. And that's what I think makes the Bowie Business Innovation Center unique and a little bit more helpful than some of the other centers out there. Because we complement each other and we make sure we don't duplicate efforts.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. And keep going the good work. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, anyone? Councilwoman Andrew Bumado?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. June, good evening. It's great to see you and thank you so much for the presentation. Just want to say congratulations on your work. It's really impressive to see how you've grown and been able to really produce results for the businesses in the accelerator and to the city of Bowie. My first question is, what are your plans to increase the number of resident businesses in the incubator? I know in 2023, you had three and then there were six non-resident businesses. So what are the plans to increase the resident businesses?
So we are working with our board at this time. Right now, we are restricted by space, physical space. We have five office spaces. Two of them go to our partners. One, you know, the Maryland Women's Business Center has an office. The Small Business Development Center has an office. And then we have staff. We kind of share offices there too. So we are limited by space. We do need to figure out how we're going to grow that. And it's, it's going to be hard within the Bowie State University. So we may have to start looking outside of that. But that's something that is, it's on our board agenda to, to figure out how we're going to navigate that.
Thank you. I like that you're thinking about that and I'll look forward to hearing the updates on that. And just comments for this body. I mentioned earlier, when the women's business, I don't want to forget the entire name, but when the other incubator had came forward, that we again had four storage facilities that were coming here with 1,200-foot square foot free space. And unfortunately, I've already fought for nonprofits to go into the two that are coming near my district. So I kind of tapped out on my request there. But there's also one coming to District One and there's one coming to District Two. So I do hope that my colleagues will work with those owners to advocate for your potential business incubator to look at possibly being one of the partner that expands to that space and being able to provide results for the Bowie community so that those property owners don't stack them with nonprofits that, that don't serve our community. That's my first comment. My second one is, it's really nice to see in your reporting and your funding source, how you're really, it's almost like most of your money is not even really coming from the city of Bowie. You're going out and you're advocating from other partners and getting, getting grant funding from them to really showcase the matching of the funding that we're giving you, which is very impressive to see. So I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing there to go out there and continue to fundraise beyond the city of Bowie. I know it's not easy with some of the entities, the names that I see that you're talking here. I know they, they act a little tight with their pocket. But the fact that you've been able to get the amount of money, you've gotten Amazon to up their commitment. I just want to honor you really quickly. You've gotten Amazon to honor that, to up their commitment from 30,000 to 40,000. You've gotten Capital One to contribute at significant levels year over year, FSC first. So you've really done a really great job. You've got the county council that is an equal and almost equal contributor as the city of Bowie. So you almost are really doing such a great job in fundraising and making sure that you're matching the funding that you're getting from the city of Bowie, which is very impressive to see. Let me ask you a quick follow-up question from that. Is there any particular thing that the city can do to support the ability for more city of Bowie businesses to be prepared for your incubator when they get to you?
Well, I'm going to say that even though, you know, we were very hard in trying to match the dollars to, to help our reach, but it also, it also sometimes takes us away, if you know what I'm trying to say here, from focusing on the city of Bowie. So it's, it's kind of catch 22 there. And so the only thing that I can say is that the, the more resources that come from the city can help us focus more on the city. But I am, like I said, we started the Franchise One-on-One series within the budget that we had because I wanted to try to see how we can currently use the dollars that we have to still do some things that were really, really tied to helping the city with its needs. And so we're going to build on that because that was very promising and to see where that goes. But at this time, that's, that's where our challenge lies, is really trying to please every funder that, you know, comes to support us. But at the end of the day, we are the Bowie Business Innovation Center. We are the Bowie BIC. And we are Bowie BIC proud. And people love that. I mean, they love the fact that we are here in the city of Bowie, that we're supported by the city of Bowie. And we're going to do everything that we can to help those businesses here in the city of Bowie.
I appreciate the response. I have one more question, Mr. Mayor. And I, I do trust that those businesses and those organizations that you are talking to that are providing the grant funding for the Business Innovation Center will continue to see the value in your support for Bowie businesses and continue to support you there. My last question is, a couple of weeks ago, I was at the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference in Las Vegas. And there were a number of different businesses that primarily are based on the West Coast that were looking at expanding to the East Coast and they're franchisee operator. What a number of those different businesses articulated to me when I walked the show floor was that they were willing to support franchise operators who are willing, or who are ready and have the capacity to open facilities on the East Coast. They were willing to set up some programmatic support and funding for them to be able to do that if they were willing to be operators and meet their requirements, kind of similar to like the Chick-fil-A model. And so what can I do to connect you with those franchise, those larger franchise, I guess you would say, entities that are looking to expand in the East Coast that have that support? Because I do think that presents a unique opportunity, since you talk about franchisees, where there's a unique opportunity for our businesses and people that are within our demographic to be the first on the East Coast. It provides a competitive advantage for them because the business is not already here, so they're known as the first. And then it also provides another competitive advantage for them as operators who traditionally may not get the support from like a Chick-fil-A who's already kind of saturated the East Coast market. So what can we do to support you there and making sure that you are providing now a competitive edge to those who have the capacity to become franchise operators?
That would, I will reach out to you tomorrow. And you can share that information with me because as I'm growing this franchise program, that would be a great added value to that.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Mayor Protem, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Rogers.
Good evening and thank you for being here with us. A couple of quick questions. What is the total budget for Bowie BIC?
From the city of Bowie or Bowie BIC in general?
Both, right, right. But what I'm really after is the total for, for your organization.
So for our organization, we have a $3,450,000 budget. $3 million of those dollars is for the Center of Excellence for 8A Government Contracting, the Center of Excellence that was launched in 2022.
Okay, and so how many funding sources do you have?
So I have the Center of Excellence, which is federal. We have the city of Bowie, we have the county council. We have about five, five substantial ones that keep us going.
Okay, great, excellent.
But our, our anchor is the city of Bowie. It's our anchor.
And the next question for you is, your, your big accomplishment, I think you had the 85 million in revenue. That was generated principally through your accelerated programs, right? How many of those were actually located or took up residence within the limits of city of Bowie?
Yes, so two of them were, were part of the 8A accelerator and 15 were part of the Capital Accelerator.
No, but how many were actually, actually ended up being the business being within the city of Bowie?
Yes, so two of them, two of those businesses were in the 8A accelerator that were Bowie businesses. And then 15 were part of our Capital Accelerator that were Bowie businesses. Is that not what you're asking?
I'm sorry, so 17 total?
Yes, 17 total, yes. It was easier for me to, to, to work it that way. My apologies. When I study the numbers, that's how I look at it.
Not, not now because of time and I wouldn't expect you to, to know that off the top of your head. Could you share that list with me?
Sure.
Outstanding, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I just want to thank Ms. Evans for the presentation. And I will tell you that she's been a, a source of information and support for the Chamber of Commerce as well, just with her contacts and, and all the stuff that she knows. I do have a quick question about the franchise funds. I had a great meeting with the owner of the marketplace Chick-fil-A. And he told me he had connected with you already. But does your capital program actually provide funds for, if people are interested in getting a franchise?
We do. We do have some, some of our funders as part of our Capital Accelerator do fund franchises.
Oh, great. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'd like to just say, thank you for the great work you're doing. We appreciate you and look forward to talking with you again soon.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you again.
Good night.
All right. Mr. Bugs, was there anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain the most?
The Jesse Bugs, a good physicist, right?
Yeah.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. I will open it for discussion.
No.
Discussion as to whether or not we really need to leave at this time. There's one that we need to really put towards staff. Go ahead. No, it's been moved and probably second. No discussion, all in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
A poll saying favor. Hearing none, we will officially adjourn at this time. Thank you, everyone.